Good evening and thank you for attending the Texas General Land Office's Public Hearing for the Community Development Block Grant Mitigation Funds today, Tuesday, September 21st. This public hearing is intended to seek input on Amendment One of the State of Texas Action Plan for Community Development Block Grant Mitigation Funds allocated to the State of Texas for mitigation programs, projects, and planning in the areas affected by the 2015, 2016 floods, 2017 Hurricane Harvey, and the 2018 South Texas floods. Before we begin, there are a few housekeeping items to address. We are using the Zoom Video Conference Service today. You'll notice that you're listed as a participant on the meeting. All participants are currently muted to reduce ambient noise, and video has been turned off to increase bandwidth for the presentation portion of this meeting. Starting right after my call to order, Heather Legroom, Senior Deputy Director for the Community Development and Revitalization with the Texas General Land Office, will give a presentation on the Action Plan Amendment. When she concludes, we will transition to public comment from our attendees. If you wish to provide public comment during today's public hearing, please complete the form at the Survey Monkey link. The link can be found in the chat box in this event or online at recovery.texas.gov-public-notices. Each commenter has up to three minutes to provide their comment. If you have completed the Survey Monkey form, we will call your name and unmute you to provide public comment. Please be aware that this public hearing is being recorded and will be made available publicly. Anyone choosing to speak is consenting to audio and/or video publication of their comments. Comments will be responded to with the submission of the Action Plan Amendment to HUD. If you do not wish to speak during this hearing, we will be accepting written comments that are sent to our email account to cdr@recovery.texas.gov. Written comments will need to be submitted by 5:00 PM Central Time on September 29th. Now I would like to introduce Heather Legroom.
Good evening, everybody. You'll see on your screen some of those very same housekeeping items that Alex just went through with you. We ask that you keep all of your comments brief and succinct as possible as we move into the presentation itself. Again, if you would like to speak during the public hearing, we're asking that you sign up via the Survey Monkey link that is on your screen and also in the chat. If you do not wish to publicly speak, you do still have an opportunity for written comment through 5:00 PM on September the 29th. Our agenda for tonight includes a status of the CDBG mitigation programs, the additional mitigation funds that have been provided specifically for the 2018 South Texas flood areas, Amendment One changes, and your public comment. Before we get started on the amendment itself, I want to take a moment to remind you the distinctions and the differences between CDBG mitigation versus CDBG disaster recovery. CDBG mitigation does not require a tieback to a specific qualified disaster. With your disaster recovery funds, you are required to have a tieback. As an example, for a Hurricane Harvey CDBG DR application and/or project, you would have to be able to define a specific tieback to Hurricane Harvey for that project to be eligible. Under the CDBG mitigation program, you are addressing current and future risks, so there is no need for tieback. DR is looking again backwards at unmet needs that contribute to a long-term recovery and restoration. Fifty percent of the funds for mitigation are being spent in areas designated by HUD as most impacted and distressed. Eighty percent of disaster recovery funds must be spent in those same HUD mid areas. And with mitigation, fifty percent of the funds have to benefit low-to-moderate income persons. With the disaster recovery program dollars, it's seventy percent of the funds benefiting low-to-moderate income persons. So far, under the CDBG mitigation program, we have successfully done what we were calling Round One of the competition. For 2015, we fully funded four projects. For 2016, we fully funded 21 projects. For Hurricane Harvey, we fully funded 81 projects. One hundred percent of the projects that we funded were LMI of that $1.1 billion. The GLO has developed method of distribution and guidance forms. We have established recurring meetings with the Hurricane Harvey impacted councils of government, and we anticipate an initiation of the COG mod process this fall and completion by spring of 2022. Be on the lookout for notifications of public planning meetings from your local COGS. And now to give you some updates on the other programs in the CDBG mitigation program. Our mitigation grant program has awarded 13 projects with additional project reviews underway. The Coastal Resilience Program has awarded two projects with $20 million expended. The Housing Supplemental Program has reconstructed 38 homes with another 24 under construction and 64 approved for start. There are approximately 900 applications under review for this program, and to date, we've expended $5 million. The Resilient Home Program is currently underway, and we are projected to reconstruct about 300 homes from those funds. The Local Mitigation Plan Program launched on July 28th. And eligibility is considered on a first comes, first served basis. To date, we have received 11 applications. That funding will remain available until fully exhausted or July 2027. More information can be found on that open competition at the link on your screen. The Enhanced State of Texas Mitigation Plan has been provided to TAN for the development of that enhanced document for the State of Texas. The Lower Rio Grande Valley Regional Watershed Study is currently underway. It is looking to reduce the impacts and increase community resilience in Cameron County, Hidalgo County, Starr County, and Willacy Counties. The Texas Resiliency Master, Texas Coastal Resiliency Master Plan for 2023 is underway. Just for everybody's benefit, the State of Texas received a federal notice publication January 6th of 2021 with a total allocation of $4,652,000, adding a new eligible area to the mitigation program. This was provided on behalf of Hidalgo County, Jimwells County, and Cameron Counties for flooding events in 2018. Going through some of the housekeeping items and general overall updates that were created with the Action Plan Amendment One, you'll notice that unutilized funds are being reallocated to the regional and state planning programs. The 26th flood mitigation competition was increased by $149,000. The GLO will now be allowed to offer partial awards to the next highest-scoring project in the HUD Mid Competition and State Mid Competition with certain requirements. You'll notice the removal of the mitigation competition or Round Two as we had been previously calling it. That $2.1 billion allocation has now been reduced to $975 million. All remaining funds from Round One will be reallocated to the Regional Mitigation Program. The South Texas floods funding for 2018 are going to create two competitions, a HUD Mid Competition for a little over $2 million and a State Mid Competition for, again, a little over $2 million. The award amount is going to be no more than $1 million per application with a minimum application amount of $250,000. Eligible applicants will be local governments, Indian tribes, and the councils of governments who are working in projects in the 2018 Texas Flood Eligible Area. Eligible activities will include infrastructure for hazard mitigation, buyouts, and acquisition. That competition will be comprised of 100 total points. Those points are broken down in the fashion that you see on your screen. Any application that does not score a minimum of 65 points will only be considered after all applications scoring greater than this amount have been funded. With the Action Plan Amendment One, you will notice a creation of a new Harris County mitigation method of distribution program. This is a $750 million set aside that will allow Harris County to develop and facilitate a county-wide method of distribution. Requirements for that method of distribution will be that the criteria be replicable for the whole allocation to eligible entities or activities, that it be conducted with at least two public hearings prior to the finalization of that mod, that one of those hearings be a public planning meeting, and it have a public comment period of at least 15 days. Eligible entities will include Harris County, cities and towns within Harris County, special purpose districts, again, within Harris County. Eligible activities will be infrastructure for hazard mitigation, buyouts and acquisition, and planning activities within a 5% cap. At least 50% of the Harris County mitigation method of distribution funds must meet the HUD LMI national objectives. Looking at the Regional Mitigation Program, you'll see that we have increased that program from $500 million to $1.1 billion. Councils of governments have been added as an eligible entity, and the COGS may request to add additional eligibility eligible entities such as state agencies, special purpose districts, Port and River Authorities, and entities in the 2015 and 2016 CDBG met counties. The breakdown of the Regional Mitigation Program is as follows. Additional details on programs that will remain within Action Plan Amendment One are Hazard Mitigation Grant Program Supplemental, though it has been decreased to $100 million. The Coastal Resilience Program has been decreased to $20 million. The Regional and State Planning Fund has also been decreased to $115 million, and administrative funds have been increased to $215 million. Those decreases are the offsets to the increase that you saw to the hazard mitigation, I'm sorry, to the Regional Mitigation Program. At this point in time, we would like to move towards our oral comment from our entities and individuals who have submitted their names. Again, we will have a three-minute limit for each of you. We ask that you state your name and affiliation if possible. If you do not wish to speak, or we run out of time to allow all of our comments to be heard this evening, please know that we are still accepting written comments until 5:00 PM on September the 29th. You can also send those comments to cdr@recovery.texas.gov, mail them to PO Box 12873, Austin, Texas 78711, or fax them to 512-475-5150.
This begins the public comment portion of our meeting. If you have completed the Survey Monkey form, we will call your name and unmute you to provide public comment. Once we call on you, you will receive a notice to unmute yourself. In order to be unmuted, you must click on that invitation to unmute. You may also turn on your video. As a reminder, each commenter has up to three minutes to provide their comment. If you need technical assistance, please call 512-696-9291. Again, if you need technical assistance, please call 512-696-9291. The hearing will conclude when all those wishing to speak have given their public comment or at 9:00 PM, whichever comes first. Again, if you wish not to speak, you may submit your comments to cdr@recovery.texas.gov. The first public commenter is Commissioner Adrian Garcia. We will also allow elected officials to go in order that they have signed up. I don't believe Commissioner Garcia is on. The next one is Mayor Pro Tem Diedrick Von Bettenfield.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us the time to offer public comment. I'll submit written comment as well, addressing this. I do have concerns that with the 1,100 small cities in Texas, there are a number located along areas where coastal resiliency is a major factor. I do think it's a disproportionate allocation to look at Harris County for $750 million when they have a number of tax-paying entities, businesses, industrial complexes that are supporting their initiatives. There are a number of cities that are smaller who have been fiscally prudent and conservative but are still waiting on FEMA reimbursements and other allocations from the state to support those smaller sort of tax revenues and other revenues that come into our smaller communities. So our incomes in our small cities are not as high, and our resources and areas from which we can draw upon that diversity of tax base is lower. So I very much disagree with this singular allocation. And that ends my comment.
Thank you for your comment. The next commenter is Congresswoman Sheila Jackson Lee.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
This is, hi, it's Irova here. This is the Congresswoman Chief District Director. I'm connecting the Congresswoman, and she's going to join in about 10 minutes.
Okay, we'll go back.
Great.
The next speaker is Mayor Ricardo Salinas. The next one is Commissioner Andy Myers.
I'm here. I can't turn on the video. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can hear you.
Okay. How do I turn the video on?
We are working on that.
I got it. Okay. Okay. My name is Andy Myers. I'm a county commissioner in Forbien County. I'm also serve as the Chair of the Houston Galveston Area Council of Governments Water Resource Committee that is charged with the responsibility of coming up with a recommended plan of distribution for these funds. I have three comments. One, I'd like to see that the low-to-moderate income measure is on a regional basis rather than on a local county or city basis. Two, I'd like to have an emphasis from the GLO on providing for at least funding for regional projects that have regional impact. And the third is related to planning and studies. I'd like to see a minimum of at least 5% of the funds that would be utilized for feasibility studies. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you for your comment. The next commenter is Councilmember Amy Peck.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Amy Peck, and I'm the Houston City Councilmember for District A, which includes Spring Branch, Inwood, Willowbrook, and everything in between. I am here today to advocate on behalf of 288,000 constituents for these funds that we are talking about today, as well as additional funding for flooding mitigation projects. Like many areas of Houston, my district was impacted by Hurricane Harvey. The neighborhoods that flooded during Hurricane Harvey are the same neighborhoods that flood in pretty much every significant rain event and even in minor rain events. The infrastructure is not adequate to properly account for drainage. In my district alone, I have over $130 million worth of projects that have been pre-engineered with no funding source identified. I will also have many millions of dollars more that will be needed after more neighborhoods go through the pre-engineering process. I have so many areas with repetitive flooding, and one neighborhood has even experienced eight separate instances of structural flooding in recent events. Any additional funds that can be directed to the city of Houston is greatly needed. Texas was given money to mitigate flooding as a direct result of Hurricane Harvey. Houston and Harris County were the biggest areas impacted by the hurricane. Flooding mitigation is a huge priority for me and my district. This needs to be taken with the utmost level of importance. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comment. The next commenter is Mayor Joe Garcia.
I'm here. I can't seem to turn on my video, though.
We can hear you, mayor.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to offer some comments. I am the mayor of Patterson located in Waller County. And Patterson is a small city in the council. There are 54 general law cities in the HGAC region, 11 of the 54 located in Harris County. I have serving as one of two general law representatives on the HGAC Board of Directors, and I serve with Commissioner Myers on the HGAC Water Resource Committee. The decision by GLO to create the Harris County mitigation method of distribution set aside for Harris County has created uncertainty in our region and certainly uncertainty for the small 11 general law cities within Harris County. The draft mitigation states that Harris County may share the allocation with cities, but it does not require them to share this set aside. It just says that they might. It's only served to create uncertainty, not only within Harris County, but also within our region as we've discussed it in our Water Resource Committee meetings. I believe it's important to ensure that the counties work with the smaller general law cities that do not receive a direct allocation and to ensure that these cities have a voice in the process. Flooding is not just a floodplain issue. It's something that may not be in the floodplains also deal with and have had to realize. Small general law cities sometimes have different issues in the larger communities. As an example, equipment or other things that maybe we may not have available. And I ask that your planning include a process to ensure that the general law cities have a voice in this effort. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next up is Councilmember William King.
I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Can you see me?
We can see you.
Can you see me?
Yes, sir.
Fantastic. Thank you. Thank you so much. I wanted to thank you for participating on the General Land Office virtual hearing, entertaining the comments of those directly impacted by Hurricane Harvey. I am a member of the home rule cities in the city of Dickinson HGAC board. I sit on the board Water Resource Committee along with other elected officials of our region. It is important and imperative that you know that Dickinson and many other home rule cities sustained serious damage during Hurricane Harvey. Eighty-five percent of Dickinson was covered in water. We're pleased that GLO has increased the funding available to regional methods of distribution. However, as you heard, many of my colleagues, elected officials indicate the funding availability and method of distribution is creating somewhat of a quansy. A lot of projects that are beyond the scope of local budgets, as you've heard multiple times. We hope that you understand, address it adequately. A second round of the statewide Hurricane Harvey competition funding through the regional method of distribution would have enough funding to support and address the needs of many of these municipalities and counties. Even with the additional funding and the regional method of distribution, many local governments won't get direct funding allocation, and it's very important that the counties work together with these particular efforts to find the funding. We ask that you will be that source aid for Hurricane Harvey mitigation, water mitigation funding. Thank you for your time.
Councilmember King, you are breaking up during portion of your comment. If you would please submit a written version of that, we would be very thankful.
We will do.
Thank you. Next up is Commissioner Rodney Ellis. The next one is Councilmember Abby Kamen.
Thank you. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Great. I'm the Houston City Councilmember for District C, and I have the privilege of representing nearly 250,000 people in some of the neighborhoods hardest hit by flooding, including the greater Meyerland area in the southwest part of Houston. Thousands of homes in this one area flooded during Harvey, but for so many, this was not the first time, but the third or fourth in as many years. While I appreciate GLO and Commissioner Bush's attempt to make this hearing tonight accessible for the Jewish community, which was devastated by Harvey, rescheduling it from Yom Kippur, unfortunately, many are still denied a chance to publicly speak because this was yet again scheduled on a Jewish holiday that many are observing tonight. This makes it all the more important for me to speak on their behalf. I'm requesting additional funds for Houstonians and a transparent process. Houston and Harris County made up about half of the statewide losses during Harvey, and Houston is the only major city to experience consecutive flooding disasters. We have had six federally declared disasters in five years, and as we're talking about cities and the ability to fund, we are the only city in the state of Texas restricted by two revenue caps. Only after overwhelming bipartisan outrage to the GLO's initial denial of a single dollar designated for area's hardest hit is there a backtracking to provide the county, but not the city, $750 million. With this proposed Action Plan Amendment, the state is blatantly straying from proportional distribution models that you previously followed in doling out federal Harvey funds. For example, HUD recommended the city and county each receive 25% of the overall allocation for Harvey housing recovery funds since our area made up about half of the damage. The state followed HUD's recommendation, and we received a CDBG allocation of 50%. Then with FEMA hazard mitigation grants, our area received about 40% of the funds. However, now the state is unjustifiably diverted from the standard that you yourselves set rather than adhering to Congress's intent. You've cherry picked numbers to exclude Houston, and it's putting lives and the economy at risk. And without sufficient dollars coming to Houston, there are tremendous unmet needs, not only directly tied to Harvey recovery, but current and future risks which you pointed to in your first slide. From roadside ditches and gutters that make up our urban drainage to the major bayous and rivers which encompass outfall drainage, there are all parts of Houston's drainage ecosystem. And without urban investment, we will not have adequate drainage for even nominal rainfall events, and we're already seeing that. Failing to provide funding for the city's urban drainage projects will have significant upstream and downstream outfall impacts as well, which puts my district's neighborhoods even more at risk. Seven hundred and fifty million out of four billion for the county to distribute does not even begin to scratch the surface. These projects would protect thousands of families and their homes while saving taxpayer dollars in the long run. And I must address the process being laid out currently by GLO for having the county and local COGS create a distribution plan that, as proposed under this Action Plan Amendment, puts the city at the mercy of the county and other COGS. Vulnerable communities in my district Vulnerable communities in my district and across the city deserve protection and cannot afford to wait for the next storm, and they should not be mired by political football. I represent some of Houston's most historic and flood prone communities. I urge desperately reconsideration of this amendment and plead for fair and adequate funding directly allocated to the city of Houston. I serve as the Chair of Houston's Public Safety and Homeland Security Committee. And I say this even more so as a Houstonian. The longer we delay because of politics, the longer we remain in danger, and we are on borrowed time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. We're going to go back to Congresswoman Sheila Jackson Lee.
Hi, it's Yorova here again, and she's connecting momentarily.
Okay, we'll go back to her. The next commenter is Adrian Holloway.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great, thank you. Hi, my name is Dr. Adrian Holloway. I am the Executive Director of the Harris County Community Services Department. I first want to thank the Texas Land Commissioner, George P. Bush, and the GLO staff for requesting approval from HUD to allocate $750 million in CDBG mitigation funding to Harris County. This will definitely assist to protect almost 5 million Texans living in Harris County from future devastating disasters. But this is a small but right step towards fulfilling the unmet need of $1.3 billion to strengthen and build resiliency in Harris County towards future disasters. Based on historical data, the probability of Harris County being affected by a rainy flood event is once every point eight one years. And this is a very high risk, as noted in the county's risk and hazard assessment. And how has this risk affected the county? Well, over the last 40 years of disasters, hundreds of lives were lost, and hundreds of thousands of lives have been repeatedly disrupted. For the cost, 161,000 flood insurance claims were paid for a total of over $8.5 billion to rebuild housing in Harris County. And during Harvey alone, Harris County suffered 40% of the disaster damages in the amount of about $15 billion. And although recognizing GLO CDBG Mit Action Plan is a most impacted and distressed county, we will request that the Harris County Risk and Hazard Assessment be referenced in the GLO CDBG Mit Action Plan to provide further justification for the county's allocation. And while Harris County is appreciative of the allocation, it is asked the GLO to consider the following actions to increase the efficient deployment and use of the funding. One is to consider granting an additional amount to the county for administrative costs. From our experience in administrating past disaster funding, the cost of developing and overseeing HUD funding as a subrecipient to the state of Texas is quite high. Also, to increase the project delivery cap to 8% for the county's projects to assist in covering costs such as audits, environmental clearances, newspaper advertising, and grant management costs that are not eligible for admin. And as the county is focusing on large, regional-based projects that will serve multiple jurisdictions and communities, the ramp up of these projects, including planning, design, and environmental, may take longer than past smaller projects. Please consider milestones that reflect the complexity of these projects and work with the county to set these milestones, specifically the 50% expenditure requirement as listed in the amendment. And also to consider to the section 5.511 AFSH review that projects that provide remedied to historically inequality would be acceptable under such review. Again, thank you again for the allocation to the county. We would also be submitting these comments in writing. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you for your comment. Our next commenter is John Beard.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is John Beard, and I'm from the city of Port Arthur. I'm a former city councilman, city of Port Arthur. I also serve as on the Nature's River Regional Flood Planning Group. And I'm the CEO and founder of community-based organization CONN, better known as the Port Arthur Community Action Network. And these are my comments with regard to the GLO CDBG Mitigation Action Plan. Suffice it to say that, given the history that my city, Port Arthur, has had with its CONN, as well as with the GLO, and the unresponsiveness of the GLO to concerns and issues brought forward by community-based organizations, such as myself, with the equitable distribution or the lack of equitable distribution of funding to low to moderate income communities, people of color, and economically disadvantaged persons. I must say here that I do not support this amendment, and I think it needs to be revised with more being done in mind to help those communities which I spoke of. This has been historically been the case all the way from Rita in 2005 to Ike in 2008, all the way to Harvey in 2017. We have not received the proper benefit and action because when money goes to the region, it gets dispersed through the region. But yet the cities that are hit the hardest and hurt the most, and the people that need help the most, get very little of it. I'll give you a for instance, and this begins with Harvey. There's a local city here, Bevel Oaks, that received per capita more money than the city of Port Arthur did. Yet, city of Port Arthur had over 20,000 homes damaged, whereas Bevel Oaks doesn't have 600 homes in the entire city. But maybe it was because of the economics, because the economics show that the average home value in Bevel Oaks was $144,000, was the average home value in Port Arthur, is under $55,000. The average incoming for Arthur is $35,000. The average income in Bevel Oaks is $77,000. These inadequacies and inequities must be addressed, and your current plan doesn't do it. And I have very little faith and confidence that this amendment is going to do the same. So I want you to be aware of my comments. I'm going to give further comments in written order. But I definitely want to stand here now and say that I do not support this, and I think the majority of the citizens of my city would not support it either. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next commenter is Kathy Gunter. Our next commenter is Gladys Hassell.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we can.
Okay, good then. You don't need to see me. Who is the contract compliance officer for HUD? Is it Phyllis Folds? If she's present and participating in this comment or hearing, or the appropriate HUD official having oversight of the GLO funding practices and policies. Now, the next concern I have is the the GLO, the General Land Office of Texas, lacks the capacity to really implement any disaster assistance programs. The funding should and must be given to community-based organizations to ensure, to implement, and really end the blatant disparity displayed by GLO in its hiring of majority Caucasian staff and contractors. And GLO administrator, one of the administrators told me only seven contractors have been selected, but maybe one is Jewish, American, or black, and he's not getting any of the jobs or the work assignments. And my recommendation to HUD and GLO is that the grassroots organizations should be considered or Charity Productions, Acres Home Chamber of Commerce, Independent Heights, Fifth Ward CDC, Shape Center, and Northeast Houston Civic Coalition. And lastly, in Southwest Houston, there is a disabled handicap taxpaying woman who's been waiting on assistance to restore a home from Harvey. And you know how long ago this been? It's actually raining inside her home, as well as other elements. She has to go to dialysis once a week, and this is just no way to treat any human being. She has been given the runaround about her documents. She keeps providing the documents each time. She goes into the office, which is very imposing to her because she's wheelchair bound. So there, I'm just curious, who's monitoring the city of Houston? GLO, Harris County, because the there needs to be a serious investigation before any more monies are allotted to GLO, the city of Houston, and Harris County. And I concur with the the Mayor Dietrich von Bidenfield that, you know, the little tiny countries, towns would really implement and apply the funding for the intended purpose and target population, unlike Houston and Harris County. It is too political. It is too corrupt as it stands right now. And I really would like to know who's going to investigate what's going on now with the city suing the GLO and GLO suing the city, and yet innocent people, like the lady who's disabled in Southwest Houston, are going without. So while we're having this comment about funding and everything, nobody's talking about addressing how this money is being monitored, if the services are being applied to the intended target population. No. So we need to focus on that before one cent more is allotted to Texas General Land Office of the State of Texas, period. So I hope that the HUD officials who have the power to monitor these funds will be listening, and all of the elected officials on the federal level, Sheila Jackson Lee, if and whenever she comes on to speak, Ted Cruz, and John Cornyn, they need to investigate what is going on here in the state of Texas, Houston, Harris County.
House, I need you to wrap up your comments, please.
Okay, well, that's it. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Our next commenter is Danielle Goschen.
Hi, everyone. My name is Danielle Goschen. I'm going to start my video. Sorry about that. And I appreciate the strong consideration of these following recommendations. For the remaining state competition funds, please ensure that the highest scoring projects are prioritized. We saw that in the first round of Hurricane Harvey State Mitigation Competition, the GLO funded lower scoring projects in areas that the state had identified as most impacted and distressed, rather than providing funding to better scoring projects in HUD mid areas. While HUD requires at least 50% of projects to go to federally determined mid areas, there is no floor requirement for the state identified mid areas. So this, we saw almost a 13-point discrepancy then between those two different categories. So for the remaining funds in the state mitigation competitions, we strongly recommend that the GLO should commit funding to the highest scoring projects. Second, remove scoring criteria that heavily prioritize less populated areas in any additional state mitigation competition rounds, including the South Texas State Mitigation Competition. Both rural and urban areas alike were hit hard by the 2015, 2016 Hurricane Harvey funds, or sorry floods. However, as we've seen play out in certain criteria, such as the such as the per capita market value criteria, we see that funds are kind of drawn away from densely populated populated areas towards areas that are more rural. So with that criteria, the the market value of the project was divided by the jurisdiction's total population, which means projects in more densely populated areas were at a disadvantage. So while a specific scoring criteria for rural communities may be warranted based on need, we do not believe that heavily weighting the scoring criteria to benefit less populated areas will achieve equitable outcomes. Third, please include scoring criteria that prioritize nature-based projects for remaining state mitigation competition funds. Natural and green infrastructure projects were heavily encouraged in the use of CDBG MIT funds, not just in the HUD guidance, but also in the state action plan. But as we've seen play out under the state mitigation competitions and the 2015 and 2016 flood funds, only about one of the projects really seems to be nature-based. Fourth, please revise the SBI scoring criteria to calculate the SBI of the benefiting area and not the entire applicant jurisdiction. In the first round of the Hurricane Harvey State Mitigation Competition, the GLO looked at the average SBI score of the entire jurisdiction of the eligible entity instead of SBI score of the benefiting area. That means that areas that have, you know, areas that are not homogeneous throughout have have resulted in, sorry, different areas across entities jurisdiction have vastly different SBI scores. So please prioritize projects in those areas with the most need with the remaining state mitigation competition funds and provide prioritization points for in areas of high SBI scores calculated based on the benefiting area and not the entire jurisdiction. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment. Our next commenter is Huey German Wilson. Oh. Oh, I'm sorry. Alan Black.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you so much. My name is Alan Black, and I'm the interim Executive Director of the Harris County Flood Control District. I'm here tonight, first and foremost, to say that the $750 million that the GLO is proposing for Harris County is fully justified, and thank you. These funds were appropriated by Congress in 2018 as a result of several major disasters, including Hurricane Harvey, the second costliest storm in U.S. history. The GLO Action Plan identifies flooding as most common hazard, major hazard in the state, and the GLO Action Plan found that hurricanes, coastal storms, and flooding has the highest hazard ranking. Harris County is unique in being a HUD most impacted and distressed county three years in a row, from 2015 to 2017. So when Harris County voters approved a $2.5 billion bond program in 2018, they did so in anticipation of an equal or greater proportional amount of federal partnership funding, funding that will reduce the risk for flooding for Harris County residents and will help protect the $2 billion investment of CDBG DR funds for housing recovery. And while the Harris County Flood Control District is of the position the 750 million is justified, it is insufficient, given the need. Appropriation does not align with congressional intent. It doesn't align with the county's demonstrated need. It doesn't align with the city of Houston's need. It's important to understand that there are three different types of flooding with three very different causes. I'm going to focus on two of them: local flooding, where water can't get out of a neighborhood due to inadequate storm sewers, and riverine flooding, where the water gets to the bayous and creeks, but there's so much that floodwaters come out of banks. The projects that the Flood Control District hopes to build through Harris County will reduce the risk of riverine flooding. But local drainage flooding falls to municipalities like the city of Houston. They too need funds to help get the water out of the neighborhoods and into flood control districts' channels, which is why I'm here tonight to request not only the full $1 billion in funding to Harris County, but another $1 billion to the city of Houston to be consistent with congressional intent and proportional to those impacted by repeated flooding. Harris County, the Harris County Flood Control District, and the city of Houston have the management capacity to deliver infrastructure projects faster than anyone else and have been delivering flood damage reduction projects to the residents of Harris County for decades. In fact, in the four years since Hurricane Harvey, we've awarded more than $552 million in construction projects. We can get the work done. We just need the funding. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Congresswoman Sheila Jackson Lee.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we can.
Okay, a little bit of
Okay, a little bit of uh difficulty here in Washington, DC. Uh thank you so very much. It's. Can't seem to find uh my video. You're showing someone else, but hopefully you can hear my voice. Which I assume you can.
Oh, we can hear you and see you.
Okay, I cannot. See that I'm being seen. Uh but in any event, let me go ahead and try to. Uh give my remarks. This is a difficult uh. When you can't determine that you're being seen. In any event, um I do recall the intent of Congress. I just heard the previous speaker. I want to thank the GLO for all of his hearing. And I hope that you will take our comments um. Specifically uh directed to the question that you're asking. I would be interested in making sure uh to know when this amendment has to be in and whether or not. The comments of my constituents uh will be heard. I think that is very important, and I assume you can get back with me on that specifically. I would appreciate it. But uh the point that I want to make is I was uh in the Congress in the aftermath of the horrific.
Destination.
Um Hurricane Harvey. Over a hundred and fifty-five billion dollars worth of damage. In fact, I introduced the first legislation. Uh to ensure that the state, none of the state would be left out. None of the state would be left out. In that instance of not being left out. We wanted to make sure that the hardest-hit areas, but we wanted every area that had damage. In the state of Texas and surrounding areas, but in particularly the state of Texas, to not be left out. That has seemingly not been the case in the interpretation of GLO. Which we hope can be reinterpreted uh to in actuality understand. That the grant that was given uh to Houston and Harris County. Was about two point four billion dollars. One point two billion for Houston, one point two billion uh for Harris County. That is not been the distribution, and I hope that the amendment will correct that. And ensure that those monies are distributed. We have no reason to want to leave out any other jurisdiction. But unfortunately. Uh we have a circumstance. Where there is none for the city of Houston and seven hundred and fifty million for Harris County. That is not reflective of the intent of the United States Congress. It was not intent of the hard work that I put in in the congressional delegation, Democrats and Republicans. Uh it simply did not uh amount to this configuration. So I will leave you with the idea uh that we have seen the results. Of the negative impact of flooding in our community. Uh we have seen the impact since Hurricane Harvey. Uh we've seen hard rains create a devastating circumstance in our communities. We've seen our small cities that Harris County includes. I represent Jacinto City and Humboldt. Parts of it. I don't want them to be as well. Uh recipients of a fair amount of money dealing with their flood uh issues, if you will. So the amendment should be uh amended. To include the breakdown of funding distribution in the way that it is appropriate. And that is with the congressional intent. One point for Harris County, one point two billion approximately for the city of Houston. I thank you for your consideration, uh and I look forward to hearing back. From the GLO is when this submission has to be in and how we can work through this and get to the point. Uh where I think that we can all solve some very serious problems uh and do uh with the funding. Uh the work that the Congress intended us to do. Thank you so very much on behalf of my constituents uh and my representation in the region. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Our next commenter is Huey German Wilson. Okay. Our next commenter is Keith Downey.
Yes. Hello, this is Mr. Downey.
We can hear you.
I would like to add. Um pardon me. I would like to add here that um you know Houston and Northeast Houston, we continue. To be seen like the forgotten quarter of the apple. Uh it's imperative that equitable funding be provided for residents. In Northeast Houston, who find themselves continuing to recover from Hurricane Harvey. Um the tech the freeze and also Ida. Houston needs that one billion dollars uh to help those in need in our communities. The need goes beyond our communities. Many residents don't have. The means to repair their structures without the proper funding. Residents will find themselves. That much more behind as more and more and more storms come along, and that's my comment.
Thank you for your comment. Our next commenter is Jackie Mayhorn.
This is Jackie Mayhorn. Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay, yes, my name is Jackie Mayhorn, and I am speaking on behalf of Northeast Super Neighbors United. And uh this is uh about twelve to fifteen super neighborhoods that have joined together. We're stronger together. But we are sick and tired of constant flooding in our community. And I would like to strongly voice my objections to the glow withholding. HUD mitigation infrastructure dollars that have already been allocated. Just like Sheila Jackson Lee just said, our Congresswoman. To Houston and Harris County, based on damages done by Hurricane Harvey. Harris County should receive the one point two billion dollars. And Houston should receive one point two billion dollars. To help mitigate future flooding in low to moderate income communities. So it's no equity in Northeast Houston. Halls and Greens Bayou, I mean, it's 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 like we don't exist. Our homes matter to us too. And we are forming a uh organization to come up with our own Northeast flood plan. And we intend to be treated just like everybody else in the state of Texas to make sure that our homes don't flood. And so we need to make sure that Houston and Harris County gets their equity. We want equity. We want the dollars in our community. And we want to be able to live a comfortable life too, just like everybody else. I mean, all this privileged stuff has to go away. The rain doesn't matter if you're red, blue. A Republican, Democrat, it doesn't matter. But what we need in Northeast Houston is more equity. And so Halls and Greens Bayou need a federal funded project to make sure that we can prevent. Our homes from flooding in Northeast Houston. So please consider the one point two billion dollars for Houston and Harris County. That's each. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next commenter is Jeffrey Cable.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Cable, and I am the Director of Community and Environmental Planning at the Houston Galveston Area Council. We appreciate the opportunity to comment tonight. Uh we support the GLO's decision to add significant funding to the regional mitigation program. And we are already in active conversations with our member local governments, uh several of which you've heard from tonight. On developing an equitable data-driven method of distribution. That will meet the diverse mitigation needs of our region's communities. We will be filing additional written comments, but what I'd like to share with you tonight is that we urge the GLO. To expand the list of eligible activities under the regional mitigation. Method of distribution program to include planning, feasibility studies, and preliminary engineering work. These types of activities are crucial to laying the necessary groundwork for creating shovel-ready mitigation projects. As well as projects that employ innovative technology or utilize green infrastructure. Yet few but the largest jurisdictions in our region have the resources available to conduct this kind of work in advance without funding assistance. As a result, we're concerned that many communities could miss out on getting the help they need with mitigation projects through our method of distribution. Because the necessary planning and study has not been done. While GLO has allocated significant funding to planning-related activities in the original state mitigation action plan. It's our understanding that most of that funding is being dedicated toward the combined river basin studies. This is important work, but it does not appear that it will get down to the level of specificity needed to scope and design local mitigation projects. Making efforts like planning uh alternatives analysis, environmental design. Uh either as a freestanding activity or as a component of an eligible implementation project seems to us to be the best solution. It would put these resources in the hands of local jurisdictions who are most familiar with their mitigation needs. And unlock the potential for the resources allocated under the MOD programs to have the transformative impacts that are intended. Thank you for your consideration of our request, and we look forward to continuing our longstanding partnership with the GLO. In making the HGC region more resilient to flooding, storm surge, and other natural disasters.
Thank you for your comment. Our next commenter is Michelle Morris. Okay, our next commenter is Rosie McCutcheon. Our next commenter is Justin Stratter. And our next commenter is Bridget Murray.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Thank you. So my name is Bridget Murray, and I'm also a resident of the city of Houston and Harris County. I'm a resident of the northeast area of Houston, Harris County. First, I am supportive of the additional funding to Harris County, but this amendment does not go far enough. I support or we support Mr. Black as well as Congresswoman Lee's comments. That the intent of Congress was approval of funding for Harvey mitigation. Uh has not been met in the approach for allocation by the General Land Office. Like so many communities in our city, we suffered damages to housing property. Our community is majority minority. Majority of the residents' income levels are below poverty. Our community uh is two point two miles from Port Houston and included in the San Jacinto River watershed. Our community has to go as far as forty miles away just to participate. In meetings to discuss what's happening in our watershed, but we take every opportunity to speak. On behalf of our community. So many of the previous speakers have referenced the forty-eight percent of Texas damages. Or impacts of Harvey occurred in the city of Houston and Harris County. But we must recognize that these are two separate uh entities. Yet we are to believe that the scoring criteria designed by the GLO was not biased, leaving residents in Houston without funding. We look forward to Amendment Two. That will provide the funding that was allocated by the federal government for the damages in all of Texas. We are looking for equity in the allocation as many areas are are victimized. By repetitive flooding, and we do anticipate more flooding due to climate change. So we do hope that GLO will uh further look at how the scoring criteria was allocated in this matter. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Our next commenter is Neil Ratcliffe. Neil Ratcliffe? Oh, yes, we can hear you.
You can hear me? Okay, you can still hear me now?
Yes, we can see you and hear you.
Okay, thank you. It was a little unclear. Um as I mentioned, uh I'm an attorney representing Harris County. Uh also, in my background, I previously served as the. Director of Housing and Community Development for the city of Houston when we administered Hurricane Ike CDBGDR recovery funding successfully. Uh and I subsequently served as the Assistant Secretary to Secretary Carson at HUD over community planning and development, and so I had. Responsibility for the CDBGDR program nationally. The, as I analyzed the scoring. Criteria, it appeared to me that it was structurally and fundamentally flawed. There are several of the criteria that very clearly were prejudicial against large jurisdictions such as the city of Houston and Harris County. Uh notably, the point for the proportion of the jurisdiction that would benefit from the project. The countywide social vulnerability index. The countywide per capita market value and specifically capacity. Uh management capacity is something that I know HUD looks very closely at with regard to the ability to successfully deploy these funds. But it appears that the GLO looked not at. Harris County's ability to successfully implement federally funded infrastructure projects. Which I would submit that there are uh few, if any jurisdictions that were in the areas affected. That have the kind of. Incredibly vast experience in implementing and constructing and developing infrastructure projects. That Harris County and the city of Houston, for that matter, have. This is what they do day in and day out. And so when HUD is looking at. The capacity of jurisdictions to be able to use these funds properly, they. Harris County should not have been judged based on its past performance with a very challenging, rather idiosyncratic. Single-family housing program, which virtually every jurisdiction in the country's country struggles with. Instead, they should have been judged in terms of their capacity for doing large infrastructure projects. Uh and for having a Harris County Flood Control District that's been around for decades and is one of the most sophisticated governmental entities on the the planet. In terms of flood remediation and resilience. So we appreciate the seven hundred and fifty million dollars. We think that that. That we're grateful for that. Uh I have great respect for the folks at the GLO who run these programs and for Commissioner Bush. Uh however, we feel that we should have received a much larger proportion of the funding, as should the city of Houston. Because we simply had so much more damage done to so many more people. And the congressional intent of the appropriation statute is to put most of the money in areas that were the hardest hit. And HUD's uh intent in drafting the Federal Register Notice for these funds. Was is to go to the areas that are most impacted and distressed. And those areas were by far Harris County and Houston. So we appreciate the seven fifty, but believe that much more should be done. And that the scoring criteria initially was fundamentally skewed against us. Thank you for your. Time.
Thank you for your comments. Our next commenter is Dee Allen. Our next commenter is Olga Carvesa. Um our next commenter is Maria Garcia. And our next commenter is Madison Sloan.
Good evening. Uh my name is Madison Sloan, and I'm the Director of Disaster Recovery and Fair Housing at Texas Appleseed. Uh we will also be submitting written comments. Uh first, I want to thank the GLO for holding a virtual hearing that enables people to protect themselves from COVID nineteen. Uh and also makes it easier for people from across the disaster area uh to participate and have their voices heard. Uh I also want to acknowledge uh that this is the first ever allocation of CDBG mitigation funding. Uh and that the state is creating an entirely new program, completely different from disaster recovery uh from scratch. Uh we would not expect that, you know, the first iteration uh of some of these programs would. Go perfectly. Uh but we would expect that the state would learn uh from the outcomes of the first generation of a program. And correct the issues that led to those outcomes. Uh and we're towards an effective process that provides real long-term protection from floods and hurricanes in high-risk areas. Uh unfortunately, this amendment uh not only fails to correct. Uh what went wrong uh in the round one. State grant competition uh including um. Uh some of the scoring criteria that other folks have alluded to. Uh it really falls back into old patterns um of devolving control over more than a billion dollars in public money to regional bodies. Uh with no guidance, uh at least not that the public has seen. Uh no requirements, inadequate oversight, and a complete lack of transparency. Uh you know, Texas is taking a giant step backwards. Uh into inefficient and ineffective patterns um that were developed using CDBGDR funds. Um but have historically forwarded the exact kind of regional mitigation projects that are the purpose. that are the purpose of this funding. You know, really specifically, that, you know, this is inefficient. This is requiring more steps, more formulas, more hearings. You know, this is delaying the funds. You know, again, you know, HUD has indicated that the goal of this money is to do innovative, long-term mitigation on a larger scale. You know, the method of distribution project process has historically prioritized making sure every county and local jurisdiction gets a piece of the pie, even if the grant is too small to do nothing more than a traffic light study. You know, most critically, you know, as Mr. Beard mentioned earlier, Southeast Texas Regional Planning Commission's MOD for Harvey CDBR money, you know, both blatantly file, violated federal regulations requiring them to use unmet need as a metric and discriminated against communities of color and working-class areas. You know, cities with the largest black populations, Port Arthur, Beaumont, and Orange got lower per capita funding for buyouts. The communities that got the most funding were over 80% white or in some cases, over 90% white, and were significantly, you know, higher income. You know, Port Arthur was allocated $71 per buyout. Taylor Landing, over $151,000 per buyout. And despite, you know, the fact that this, this MOD didn't comply with federal disaster recovery dollar requirements and was discriminatory, they were allowed to go forward using that. So we have a lot of fears around around using this process again when one of the issues with Round One was that very high-risk area.
We need you to wrap up your comment, please.
I, I apologize. I would just note that this, this process should be much more transparent. The public should get to see the guidance that GLO is issuing. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next commenter is Teresa Davis.
Good evening. My name is Teresa Davis, and I serve as the Director of Government Affairs and Community Engagement for the Coalition of Environment Equity and Resilience, SEER. And as a community bottom-up approach, we make sure that we consider community a priority at every phase of the decision-making process, especially in terms of disaster recovery and relief. As a regional footprint servicing five counties to include Harris County, Brazoria, Liberty, Fort Bend, and Jefferson County, we want to make sure that we advocate for those communities, specifically people of color. This amendment allocated money directly to Harris County, but it doesn't guarantee any funding to the other hardest-hit areas on the coast that were left out of Round One funding, including Southeast Texas, for example, Port Arthur and Beaumont. Just recently, as we all know, Hurricane Nicholas devastated Brazoria County. Again, these areas are repeatedly hit by hurricanes and flooding. They are indeed the most at risk. But the state isn't addressing where mitigation is needed the most or the people are at risk. Texas is doing what it has always done. This is seemingly a repeated pattern. We're delegating responsibility to smaller and smaller levels of government without regard for capacity, without sufficient guidance and oversight, and making it extremely hard for public to know what money is being spent and/or how public and community, specifically people of color community, can participate in the process. Thank you for allowing me to speak, and that will conclude my comments.
Thank you for your comment. Our next commenter is Wendellin Jones. Okay, our next commenter is Melanie Oldham. You should have received an unmute notice.
Hello?
We can hear you now.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we can.
Okay. Yes, my name is Melanie Oldham, and I live in Brazoria County, which is directly south of Houston. I live specifically in Freeport, Texas, which is an environmental justice city right on the Gulf Coast. As you know, like other areas, we went through Hurricane Ike in 2008. And then with Hurricane Harvey, we got flooding like we've never had before. After, a couple days after Hurricane Harvey hit, all the water came rushing down the Brassus River to southern Brazoria County, and we had areas, Jones Creek, Lake Jackson, areas that had never, ever flooded before flooded. And because of that, a lot of these folks did not, we did not have flood insurance. I'm sorry. But anyway, so it's been a lot of hardship on people in Brazoria County ever since that post-Hurricane Harvey flooding. And so there's still, as a home health therapist, I drive around southern Brazoria County, and there's blue tarps still on people's homes from Hurricane Harvey flooding. And, you know, the county, Brazoria County is trying to find money to, you know, improve the drainage and get us out of all these A E flood zones. Also, the beaches that we have, you know, we have Bryan Beach, Surfside Beach, Quintana Beach. And every time, even recently with Hurricane Nicholas, our beaches are completely washed away, our goons are gone, and we have to start all over again. And here in Freeport, Surfside, Lake Jackson, we depend on the tourism. And so it has devastated some of our, our beaches. And also, as you know, last week, our area was hit with Hurricane Nicholas. And for instance, where I live in Freeport, a town of 12,000 people, 65% Hispanic, you know, people of color. We were without power for six days. The only place in the town that had power, because we did not have generators, was the police department and the fire department. Our city hall was shut down for six days. But anyway, we have had a lot of hardship in Brazoria County, which is a big county from, we go from Pearland at the Harris County line all the way down to Freeport. But again, like, we need more funding. We have so many needs, and we just hope that you remember Brazoria County and help us with funding, and especially for us in the environmental justice communities. We, we need help. All right, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you for your comments. Our next commenter is Jeanette Smith.
Jeanette? Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we can.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for allowing us an opportunity to come tonight and have input on a very important issue in Houston-Harris County. I'm Jeanette Smith, resident of Houston, Texas, and of Harris County. I reside in the northeast quadrant of Houston, subdivision Northwood Manor subdivision, and I am here representing my neighborhood, my northeast super neighborhood organization, as well as Super Neighborhood 47. I am one of the persons, numerous persons, numerous seniors in my area who have flooded. And when I'm, when I say flooded, meaning water in your home with just about every flood or even in some instances, a normal, what you call a normal rain, water in your house. I'm a senior citizen, retired widow living alone on a fixed income. As of right now, I've not been able to completely repair the house since Harvey, because by the time we got going after locating a contractor to do the work and, and getting finances to, to start on Harvey repairs, before you even got a fourth of the way into the project restoration of your home, email comes, and the water's back in the house again. The rain that we had March of this year, which was, some people called it a small rain or a normal rain. Our streets were flooded, water almost backed up to the doors, coming back into the homes. And I'm speaking tonight as one of those homeowners. First, as a homeowner since 1971 in Northwood Manor, I'm a native Houstonian, located in northeast Houston. I represent second as a homeowner and now a senior citizen widow, retired, living alone, whose home has been devastated by floodwaters by each major storm, tropical depression, hurricane, or even a normal rain. The funds that were earmarked for Houston-Harris County must be redirected to our city in order for us as residents to get the resiliency, have equity in projects, flood projects in our neighborhood.
Thanks for your comments. Our next commenter is Barbara McIntyre.
Yes, hi. I am Barbara McIntyre. I am the chairperson for the Liberty County Long-Term Recovery Committee, and I want to thank GLO for the opportunity to be heard. I am speaking on behalf of our community. We have been blessed by GLO. We had, for Harvey, 455 applications. We've had 181 homes completed. We had 205 homes residents rejected. And so my question is, Liberty County still matters to us. There's been a lot of funds for roads and bridges, but we deal with grassroots on the ground, taking care of our residents, our most vulnerable population of constant suffering. And the funding that are coming in for the homes, we have a great relationship with our representative here in, in our county, and we have a connection with them. But the day-to-day operations of getting things done, our LTRCs, or the ones who know the community, can get the community out as they are coming in with wanting to have our residents, who our internet here is like in, in most small communities, is average at best. We have 13 cities in Liberty County, and of those 13 cities, we try to represent all of them, try to have representation from all of them. We have case managers, and we feel that as GLO is making decisions for us, that our LTRCs who are on the ground, who knows the resident, who knows community, who knows who's been left out, we need a voice and we need a seat at the table. I'm Barbara McIntyre, and I am very proud to represent Liberty County Long-Term Recovery Committee. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Our next commenter is Vicki Martin.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Are you able to hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm calling, I am a member of the Northeast Super Neighborhoods United, and I'm calling to represent the area of stating that we would like to see equity as well. The northeast quadrant of the city of Houston was heartlessly impacted by Hurricane Harvey. We're still attempting to rebuild. We're requesting mitigation resources in, in regards to the halls and the Greens Bayou watersheds. We would like to see the homes in that area be considered to be elevated. We don't see where there is consideration for elevation, and we would like the funding to be considered for the residents of northeast Houston who are still attempting to rebuild and to have the funding go to the city of Houston. And I'll go ahead and yield back. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next commenter is Mary Fontenot.
Hello, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am, I'm with the Pleasantville community. Excuse me. And I am asking, the host has asked you to start your video. I'm not sure what that means. Are you there?
Yes, you don't have to start your video.
Okay, good. I am asking you guys to please, first of all, thank you for moving forward and conversations for the Pleasantville community. But like everyone is saying, we still need those funds dearly to help address the other concerns regarding flooding and, and what we have to do with the infrastructure in our community as well as in so many other communities. So we really, really, really want the help and the, and the assistance to meet those needs. We really need those funds in Harris County. We were the hardest hit. And, and that's, that's what I want to stress to you guys, that we really need those funds to address Albany's, to, to stop further flooding from happening in our community. And with that, I'll, I'll yield my time to someone else.
Thank you for your comments. That concludes all the speakers who have signed up via Survey Monkey. If you have not already made a comment and wish to do so, you may indicate that by raising your hand. If you are joining on your computer, move your cursor to the bottom of the screen. An icon should appear that says reactions. If you click on that icon, you will have the option to raise your hand. If you are joining by phone only, you may raise your hand by pressing star nine. As a reminder, once we call on you, you will receive a notice to unmute yourself. In order to be unmuted, you must click on that invitation to unmute. It looks like no one raised their hand. As a reminder, all public comments can be submitted to cdr@recovery.texas.gov by 5:00 PM on September 29, 2021 will be considered. If you have any additional comments or questions, you may email or visit the website at recovery.texas.gov. Thank you and have a good evening.